The Monday, February 5th, 2024, regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the rule.
Counselor Brooks.
Present.
Counselor Craig Cormier.
Present.
Counselor General Lawitz.
Present.
Counselor Hardern.
Present.
Counselor Heath.
Present.
Counselor Math.
Present.
Counselor Munoz Tibot.
Present.
Counselor Tesone.
Present.
Counselor Tyros.
Present.
And President Krasinski.
Present. Item number 11189, Remembrance of Counselor Ronald Cormier. For the public in attendance and those at home watching who may not be aware, it is with a heavy heart for me to share that Counselor Ron Cormier passed away unexpectedly last Sunday, January 28th. He served 19 terms on the Gardner City Council where he was affectionately known as the dean of the council, and that he was. Ron was the longest-serving city councillor in the history of the city of Gardner, serving in many capacities during his tenure, including council president. During Ron's memorial services, Counselor Craig Cormier, or Ronnie's son, used the term "better" to sum up his father's life, so full and so well-lived. I am confident in saying that we are certainly better for Counselor Ron Cormier's service and contributions to our community, and we will continue to do better because of it. At this time, for those here this evening who are able to do so, please stand for a moment of silence and remembrance of Counselor Ronald Act Cormier. Thank you. Please be seated.
Madam President.
Counselor Math.
Leading to a motion, Counselor Ronald Cormier's presence will be missed. Each of us are indebted for the extraordinary leadership and knowledge he brought to this chamber. He gave so much to so many, and the sudden void he left will be felt by many for years to come. May his wife Marcel, his son Counselor Craig Cormier, his daughter Pam, and his entire family be comforted by the prayers and condolences of a grateful city, a city that he loves so much and served with such devotion. May all those who mourn his loss cherish the memories of a life well-lived. Thank you, Counselor Ron Cormier. May you rest in peace. Madam President, I make a motion that we send a letter of condolences to his family on behalf of the city council.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Judy Mac, seconded by Counselor Tesone, to send a letter of condolences to the family of Counselor Ronald Act Cormier. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Please rise to recite the opening prayer and say the pugilium.
Almighty God, we thank thee for bringing us together this evening, inspire us toward the deeds and sound decisions, and direct us toward the attainment of good city government. We pray thee to bless and protect all the people of our city since you so guide and inspire us that we may deliberate in unity and harmony. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the ultimate of open meeting recordings, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to general law, chapter 38, subsection 20. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? Thank you. We will begin with the reading and approval of the December 4th, 2023 regular meeting minutes and December 18th, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Counselor General Lawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Tyros, to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. There are no public hearings. At this time, I'm going to take out-of-order items number 11184, 11185, and 11186 on page two of our council agenda. Item number 11184, a measure confirming the fire chief's appointment of Lorenzo Calderon Jr. to the position of firefighter permanent. Counselor Tyros.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank Chief Legoy for this communication. While council approval is not required for this position, I move to place the communication on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor General Lawitz, to place the communication on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 11185, a measure confirming the fire chief's appointment of Jacob Logan to the position of firefighter permanent. Counselor Tyros.
Thank you, Madam President. And once again, thank Chief Legoy for this communication and move to place the communication on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor General Lawitz, to place the communication on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 11186, a measure confirming the fire chief's appointment of Richard Belanger III to the position of firefighter permanent. Counselor Tyros.
Thank you, Madam President. Leading to a motion, I'd also like to thank the chief for this communication and note that in his communication, very good news for the city. We are now fully staffed with all positions filled in our fire department. I know this has been a priority of the city, and Mayor Nicholson has staffed a fully-staffed fire and police department, so I think it's great that we've now finally reached that place, and I move to place the communication on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Heath, to place communication on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. At this time, we will take a brief recess of the meeting to swear in those who have been appointed here this evening. We will reconvene after the swearing is completed and call the meeting back in order at that time.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Richard Belanger.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of firefighter.
Perform the duties of firefighter.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. And have you raised your hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
Aye, Jacob Logan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of firefighter.
Perform the duties of firefighter.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Communications from the mayor. Communications, item 11172, a measure to establish a special revenue fund under the provisions of section 53K of chapter 44 of the general laws of the Commonwealth for the Waterford Street Community Center project. Counselor General Lawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. As the finance committee has not met, I would like to move to refer this item to the finance committee for further study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Tesone, to refer the item to the finance committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 11173, a measure authorizing an intermunicipal agreement between the city of Gardner and town of Westminster for veterans' services. Counselor General Lawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. For the same reasons, I'd like to refer this to the finance committee for further study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Tyros, to refer the item to the finance committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 11174, a measure authorizing an intermunicipal agreement between the city of Gardner and town of Ashburnham for veterans' services. Counselor General Lawitz.
Thank you again. Again, I'll move to refer this to the finance committee for further study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Tyros, to refer the item to the finance committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Communications continued. Item 11175, a resolution in support of the city of Gardner's statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for funding to replace the roof of the Gardner Middle School. I'm going to ask Mayor Nicholson to please come up at this time and share some information about this resolution.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Item number 11175 and 11176 relate to different applications that the city does have upcoming deadlines for, so I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on these matters here within the council meeting. Item number 11175 relates to the city's application or statement of interest is what the official terminology for this is called, for the Massachusetts School Building Authority to replace the roof at the Gardner Middle School. The current roof of the Gardner Middle School is original to the building's 1997 construction, and it is starting to show some signs of its wear and tear. It is a metal roof that has been patched on occasion, and it still is having some leaking issues. This process is something that the city's undergone several times before with the new boilers that were installed at the middle school, new science labs at the high school, and the new windows at the Elm Street School building, and then most recently, the actual new school construction building for Gardner Elementary School. How this process works is we submit a quote "statement of interest" to the school building authority. The school building authority is comprised of a committee overseen by State Treasurer Deborah Goldberg. That committee then reviews all of the statements of interest that it receives and then invites different municipalities and school districts to the next stage of the process, and that's the actual grant application itself. So this is a letter of interest letting the committee know that the city is interested in applying for funding for the middle school roof. They then have to allow us to apply for that funding after that based off of the statements of interest that they receive and the amount of funding that they have available in a fiscal year. So this is a resolution that is required for the statement of interest to have the legislative body of the city support the city's application to move forward along in the process. Again, this is a grant application, and in fact, this is the introduction for the grant application. So this is something that we may get this year, we may have to be pushed down to a later year, but this is a required step in that process. So I'd be happy to answer any questions from the committee. I will say that, excuse me, from the council, I will say that part of the process after the statement of interest is submitted is the actual finding out how much this project is going to cost, and it's actually done through a very state-regulated process with only state-regulated procedures by state-regulated and approved engineers who are, have done this work before and approved by the state to do that work and give us that cost estimate. So it's not something I can provide a cost estimate for at this time, because even if we went out and got an engineer's cost estimate on ourselves, we would then have to go out and get a different one and mimic the exact same work, because the state only allows us to use certain companies for that matter.
Questions, comments from the council? Counselor Mac.
Mayor Nicholson, if this gets approved, the application moving forward, what percentage will the Massachusetts School Building Authority cover for the roof replacement?
That's a great question, and for the benefit of those watching and for those councils who may be unfamiliar with this process, based off of different income levels, the last census that was done determines the amount of reimbursement that the state moves forward with. Gardner is at an 80% reimbursement rate, so 80% would be covered by the Commonwealth if approved in, you know, step five or six of this process, so step one, and 20% would be borne by the city.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Further questions, comments from the council?
Madam President, if I could just add to my last answer.
Mr. Mayor.
Unlike the actual school building itself, where it's 80% of eligible costs, and the school, the school building authority breaks down what is an eligible cost and what is not. So for instance, the school building authority allows for the reimbursement of 80% on the construction of a cafeteria, but allows for 0% reimbursement on the construction of an auditorium. This is different. The roof is a mandatory item on a school district and on a school building, and that's what they determine what they reimburse for and what they don't. Is this absolutely mandatory for the school building to be in operation? You don't need an auditorium to have a school as much as we would like an auditorium. So that is something that is a necessity, so it would fully be 80% of the project, not just 80% of eligible cost, as we stressed during the construction of the school.
Thank you. Further questions, comments from the council? Counselor General Lawitz.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the council president to sign the resolution in support of the application on behalf of the city council.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Tibot Munoz, to authorize the council president to sign the resolution in support of the application on behalf of the city council. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 11176, a resolution in support of the city of Gardner's application for the Ray's discretionary grant from the United States Department of Transportation. I'd also like to ask Mr. Mayor Nicholson to provide some more information on this resolution.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Like the last item, this item is also time-sensitive as the grant deadline is approaching, so this, I'd like to thank you again for the opportunity to speak on this item. The Ray's Grant is a new discretionary grant issued by the United States Department of Transportation. Last year was the first year that it was run through this funding. It is funded through the bipartisan infrastructure law that was adopted by Congress and signed by the president. This is a grant for us to do a couple of different things in downtown Gardner. I will say that this is a two-phase grant, so it's likely that if we were to get this funding this year, I would be back asking for an additional resolution next year. This is a grant application, so at this time, we've applied for as much funding as we can without the need of city funds also being added to the final project, but again, that all determines on what we get as a result of if the grant is awarded or not. What is funded in this year's grant application that we're looking for, it's a $3.6 million grant application that we put forward. What this covers is a full parking study of the downtown. This goes from everything to, do we stay with parking meters, do we move with kiosks, is there a different type of a technology out there that we can use, or should we move to just free parking in general? Additionally, the completion of the work on Rear Main Street. That way, we do anticipate that the groundbreaking for the project will take place sometime this calendar year. However, there are some cost overages that we are anticipating with that, so applying for the funds to finish out that project so that the additional items that were cut from the original design can now be added back into that design. The funding of a full design of a four-story parking garage above the West Street parking lot, because one of the main concerns that we've been hearing lately is with the increased amount of anticipated housing development in the downtown, as well as the new businesses that are opening, do we have enough parking to meet that need? And the parking study will tell us, is that the best use of funding? Should we go with a parking garage? Is that the best location for it? So the design is in there to be used as a step in that process. Now, the way that federal laws work and different general laws of the Commonwealth as well, before we go out for something that big in an infrastructure project, we are required to do a full engineering concept design for a parking deck or something infrastructure-related for what's called a public work. So that's why we have to go out for the design in this phase. So the construction portion of this grant application goes towards the Rear Main portion. The planning portion goes towards the parking study, the suggestions on how we can make downtown more mobility-friendly in terms of our pedestrians, bicycle, and vehicular traffic, the parking garage design that's in there, and then lighting upgrades in the Nipple Street parking lot and throughout the streets that we don't currently have the Victorian lights on. If we were to add them there, what types of, how many lumens should those lights be? How many lights per tall aluminum post that we have? I can tell you, a part of the grant is seeing how many Victorian light posts we'd have to put in front of City Hall to see how those tall metal poles compare to Victorian light posts, things of that nature. So this is a planning grant in some aspects, a construction grant in terms of Rear Main, and then a design grant in terms of the parking garage that we have planned. All three of those aspects are required for the grant application. So this is something that we're looking for a resolution from the city council to move forward with our application. We have reached out to the business community and received several letters of support from those businesses. We've reached out to the governor's office and our congressional delegation and our state legislative delegation. All of them have submitted letters of recommendation for these, for this application as well. So it's something that is a very competitive grant nationwide. Last year, only three of the grant applications were awarded for the Commonwealth in Massachusetts compared to all of the ones nationwide, so it's something we may get, we may not get, but if we don't get it, we're at least stay where we are right now, and if we do get it, it does move us forward, and the matching portions would be covered by the Commonwealth's matching funds through the Department of Transportation on the state level, as well as the regular grant from the federal level.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. Which office in City Hall is going to be writing these grants and submitting the grants, and who submits all the support?
So the grant writing, as well as the administration, would actually be done through the on-call grant writers. If you remember, last year, I approached the city council seeking an earmark to hire that on-call grant staff through the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. They are going to be taking care of, actually, they've already started, writing the full grant application and would be administering the grant, should the grant be awarded as well.
Thank you. Further questions, comments from the city council? Counselor Brooks.
Thank you, Madam President. If I understand correctly, Mayor, can I address the mayor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Understand what you said, Mayor, that the funding in this grant is for design work on a garage, a West Street.
Correct, yes.
As I look at the budget, it says parking garage, $10 million. Is that?
That's if it was to be fully constructed. The design itself is $915,000.
Okay, so are we, all right, so that's why I'm confused, because it's, are we putting in for 15 million then?
So 15 million is the full project.
Yep.
I just wanted you to see what the full project would be in the end. That's why that budget is there. We are putting in for 3.6.
3.6. The raise we had is 3.6.
Yes.
Who's the design? Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's the phase one. Next year would be that full, that 15 million minus the 3.6.
Okay, so it's a two-step grant.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Further questions, comments from the council? Counselor General Lawitz.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the council president to sign the resolution in support of the application on behalf of the council.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Mac, to authorize the council president to sign the resolution in support of the application on behalf of the city council. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 11177, a notification from the mayor regarding receipt of prison mitigation funds from the Commonwealth. Counselor General Lawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. Leading to a motion, this notification is from the mayor regarding the prison mitigation funds. These are monies that the city receives. Any municipality that hosts a state correctional facility gets a certain amount of mitigation funds from the Commonwealth. Ours total was just shy of $144,000. I believe it was paid near the end of January into the general fund. That being said, I'd like to make a motion to place the notification on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Tesone, to place the notification on file. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 11178, a notification from the mayor regarding the fully-executed collective bargaining agreement between the city of Gardner and the Gardner Patrol Union for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2026. Counselor General Lawitz.
Thank you again, Madam President. Again, leading to a motion, this is, as you stated, the police union contract that was negotiated is from July 1st, 2023, through the fiscal, the year 2026. I would like to make a motion to place this notification on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Tyros, to place the notification on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Orders, item 11180, an order appropriating $625,000 from stabilization to DPW salt shit. Counselor General Lawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. Leading to a motion, normally appropriations would be referred to the finance committee, but as this is a larger, much larger amount than some of the others that we receive, and it is coming from the stabilization account, I would move to refer this to the committee of the whole, or further study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Tyros, to refer the item to the council as a committee of the whole for further study and report. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Appointments, item 11181, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Paul Cormier to the position of golf commission member for term expiring January 22nd, 2027. Counselor Tyros.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to place, to refer this item to the appointments committee for study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor General Lawitz, to refer the item to the appointments committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 11182, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Frimpong Antwi to the position of police officer, permanent. Counselor Tyros.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to refer this item to the appointments committee for study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Mac, to refer the item to the appointments committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 11183, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Elijah Williams to the position of police officer, permanent. Counselor Tyros.
Thank you, Madam President. I was informed by the mayor that this appointment was a clerical error. We had anticipated receiving the appointment of Nathan Galisano to the position of police officer, permanent. Therefore, I move that we remove this item from the calendar in anticipation of receiving a new appointment, a new corrected, specific appointment from the mayor's office.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Heath, to remove the item from the calendar. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor, Counselor Tyros.
Sorry, Madam President. I just forgot to clarify that Elijah Williams, Officer Elijah Williams, is currently a police officer, and we have already voted on his appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera, item 11179, applications for motor vehicles dealers license class two, Gardner Motors LLC, 119 Pearson Boulevard. Counselor Craig Cormier.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. While not referred, we did have a chance to discuss this item at the meeting just previous to this meeting. This is a reapplication for this dealer. They had been concerned with the police department about issues on the site. All of those have been addressed, and the police department has reported that they are, they have no objections at this point, neither does the clerk's office. So with there being no objections from any departments, we, the safety committee moved unanimously to recommend approval, and I so move.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Hardern, to approve the application. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. We took the next three items on the agenda, 11184, 11185, and 11186 out of order and have already entertain them. We'll continue with item 11187, a measure relative to the March 5th, 2025 presidential primary election order. Counselor Dernalowitsz?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to refer this item to the Finance Committee for further study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dernalowitsz, seconded by Counselor Tyros to refer the item to the Finance Committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 11188, an open meeting law complaint filed by Paul DeMaio regarding executive session minutes of the city council. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to authorize the council president to respond on behalf of the council that the executive session minutes have already been approved and are available.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Heath to authorize the council president to respond on behalf of the council that the executive session minutes have been approved and are ready for, to be released. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Reports of standing committees, Finance Committee, item 11118, an order authorizing $106.24 payment of prior year salary expenditure. Counselor Dernalowitsz?
Thank you, Madam President. As the Finance Committee has not met, I would ask for more time on this item.
Second.
There, the committee will be granted more time if there is no objection. The committee will be granted more time. Safety Committee, item 11086, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 24, entitled Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets, Comey Street. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I spoke to the Chief McAvine, and on item 11086 and 11115, he is working with the DPW Director to make sure that these get implemented on a 60-day basis so that we can have any feedback from local residents on these changes, and therefore, I ask for more time on both items.
The, if there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time on item 11086 and 11115, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 24, entitled Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets, Douglas Road. Since there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time on those two items. Item 11116, applications for motor vehicle dealers license class two, Gardner Five-Star Auto Sales, 407 Chestnut Street. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. On this item, we met at the Safety Committee right before this meeting. We have discussed with the Chief of Police. All items with them have been resolved at this time. The Building Commissioner recommended approval on the condition that a new site plan be delivered to the Building Commission in a time we so deign appropriate in discussion. Counselor Heath has moved that we recommend approval on the condition that the applicant provide this site plan within 120 days, and that motion was approved unanimously. Therefore, we move to recommend application for approval based on the condition that they submit the required documentation within 120 days.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Heath to approve the application with conditions. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Appointments Committee, item 11124, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Alan Agnelli to the position of historical commission member for term expiring January 8th, 2027. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I respectfully request more time on items 11124 through item 11158.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted on more time for items 11124 through items 11158 as listed in our council packet. The committee will be granted more time. Unfinished business and matters for reconsideration, item 11112, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 675 thereof, entitled zoning to add sports betting to the zoning table of uses. This item, if there is no objection, will be granted more time on this item and item 11113, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 675 thereof, entitled zoning, to amend Section 1070 thereof, entitled marijuana establishments to change the method to increase the quota allowed by the code of the City of Gardner. As the planning board meets Tuesday, February 13th, after that meeting, you should receive their final recommendation to the council, and then the council will have action at that point on the item. This is by state statute. This is the process that you have to follow when you have a zoning ordinance amendment. So the next step, since we've had our joint public hearing with the planning board, the next step, and receive their initial recommendation, the next step is to get their final recommendation, and again, we will receive that after their February 13th meeting. It's anticipated that we will. If there's no objection, we'll be granted more time on these two items. We will be granted more time. There is no new business. Council comments and remarks? Are there any council comments and remarks this evening from the city council? Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to echo the words of Counselor Mack earlier this meeting and express my personal condolences to the Cormier family. Counselor Ron Cormier was a great mentor, a great role model for our community, who's a fantastic school principal for me at Holy Rosary School, and will be missed by this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further council comments and remarks? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn after the closing prayer.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tisoni, seconded by Counselor Mack. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Almighty Father, who sees us over all, as we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity of joint deliberation and action witnessed during the course of this meeting. Blessed, O Lord, all who are gathered here and the people who represent us, we are. We do thou attend to our common welfare until our next meeting. Amen. The meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, everyone.